All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome you to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, June the 7th. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to conduct and handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Hines, to give a brief explanation. Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we're also using audio-only teleconference options, which allow the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand feature option when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower-hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing *9 at that time. We request that all speakers, in person and on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. If everyone could please join us in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.sapcounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 11th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do we have anything from council this evening?
Yeah, on Item F6, I actually live inside of LLC 3, so you need to separate that one or just let the record state. You can just let the record state that my vote will not count towards that item if you want to do all you want.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Sandu?
Yeah, you can get the record now, what I'll call for the record now.
I'm sorry.
That's finally when the mayor reads the consent calendar, you announce your vote, but you will not be yourself because of that item, but you'll be required to apply the record on that item. That's what City Clerk's office does, they actually choose a vote if you have a conflict on the vote or get the item that you have a conflict on.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilman Vandenberg. Anything from council, anything else? All right, move on to Item C, Presentations. Our first tonight is going to be the Galt Youth Commission, Student Member Appointments and Administering the Oath of Office. Tina?
Okay, so tonight's item is to accept the student member appointment selected by the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors, and they're also going to be taking their oath of office. So if those members want to come up to the front, I will give you your oath.
I'm a ninth grader at Galt High.
I'm Alexia Bullian, I am also a ninth grader at Galt High.
I'm Kason Jones, and I'm going into my junior year at Galt High.
I'm Mikey Brixey, I am going into my ninth grade year at Liberty Ranch High School.
Hello, my name is Alexa Morales-Cuevas.
I instate your names.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
During such time.
As I am a member, student member.
As I am a student member.
Of the Galt Youth Commission.
The Galt Youth Commission.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of commission member.
Commission member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, your answer is right.
Congratulations to each of you, and I want to thank all of you for wanting to be a part of your community and volunteering for this position or applying for the position. Look forward to serving with you guys.
And we do need a motion to...
Okay. Looking for a motion to accept the student member appointment selected by the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano and seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Accepted, 5-0.
Okay, the next item is the Galt Youth Commission Annual Report, and we have a couple members here to get that report. And there is a clicker up there if you want to...
Hello, my name is Alexa Morales-Cuevas, I'm amazing chair with GYC, as our members of the GYC, we are ladies and gentlemen. Do you want to turn the side button on? Is the side button on? Probably that one. The commissioners for this year are Alexa Morales-Cuevas, our amazing chair, Genevi Baker's vice chair, Isabella Sosa, secretary, Star Enriquez treasurer, Damaris Ramirez, publicity chair, Lauren Karen fundraising chair, Joshua Kuller, sergeant of arms, Alexa Scold, council liaison, and me. I'm commissioner, but I'm just as fun.
So the purpose of the GYC is outlined in our ordinance, which includes developing leadership skills and fulfilling goals that we set for ourselves to help improve the community and better the youth and encourage them to get participating, and inclusivity is very important in this. So we do projects such as Extravaganza, we put on most recently, and that was a good success, and we also work on skills such as public speaking within the commission.
So this year, we continued a project that we started a few years ago, and this was the Adopting the Street project. The goal of this project is to maintain our city of Galt clean and encourage the entire community to do so. And this year, we continue working along Lincoln Way, but we also explored new areas in partnership with the Beautification Committee. We were able to produce a PSA video and informational posts that led to a wider turnout, and this was also in partnership with the Beautification Committee and Cal Waste. Oftentimes, after we were done with the cleaning, we got treated by committee members or nearby organizations, so we truly appreciate all the support that was demonstrated to us. And this year, we definitely worked on developing this project and making it more successful.
So next up, we have the Fashion Show project, which was held at Galt High for the Career Fair, and this was a project that we brought back and we had done in the past, and it was organized by us at the GYC along with former adult mentor Tracy Cross, and we reached out to the Galt Teen Center and Interact Club, who helped put on this and serve as models, and the show focused on what to wear and what not to wear to interviews, so hopefully it would help some kids do good at their interviews.
We served our community in many ways. Some of them are the Kevin Todd Memorial Run, and we even participated in the Fourth of July Parade afterwards. It was a lot of fun. Some other ones are Lightning of the Night, Spookishly Fun Movie Night, and one of my favorites, Easter Extravaganza. We had a lot of fun, and we got to interact with not only our members, but the members of our city of Galt as well.
I just wanted to mention that we did do a raffle fundraiser at the Extravaganza, which was a great success, and we've had a lot of donors, so we'll talk about that later.
Besides the team building we do do during our volunteer work and, you know, our meetings at the council, there are other ways we do team building connections, including our ice cream social, I think we introduced our new members there, and it was a lot of fun, and the Ropes Course Retreat, and we have another retreat coming as well. And with this, what we do is we're going to be spending the whole year together, so it gets us to bond and talk about our, like, you know, our future goals and, like, things that we would like to do.
So as part of something the Galt Youth Commission does for youth, we give out two or three $250 scholarships that are offered to Escholita Galt High and Liberty Ranch, but Escholita didn't have any applicants this year, unfortunately, but we'd like to give a congratulations to the winners, Kira Shoder and Hania Paola Hauri Torres from Galt. So we wish them the best of luck, and thank you for applying.
Hania Paola Hauri Guay Torres.
Thanks. As far as skill building goes, we really learn skills that can be transferable to the real-world situations and through projects like Adopting the Street and Easter Extravaganza and other projects we've done in the past and hopefully will do in the future, we definitely build the skills like leadership, personal strengths, team building, and responsibility. It's really important to learn responsibility because when you're taking on so many projects, you have to be really kept with your time and manage it well. And adult mentor Lisa Clots, who sadly going away this year, has given us lessons of leadership at the beginning of each meeting, and those have really helped with all around.
And of course, we would like to give a big thank you to our supporters this year. We had our amazing adult mentors who really helped us grow as individuals, but also as team members. We had our city council representative, Sean Farmer. We had Lisa Clots, Jessica and Matt Hill, Talon Harris, and Paige Lamson. And we just wanted to give a huge shout out to Lisa, who, as mentioned recently, is going to retire this year, and we've really appreciated her huge support for the Galt Commission, and she's been with us since the commission started, I believe, and she's just been a big asset to our team, so we really are just grateful for her assistance, and we wish her a really happy retirement. And of course, this year, as mentioned earlier, with our Extravaganza event and other events, we had many supporters and new donors that I would just like to commemorate, just to name a few. We had a lot of helpers. We had the Beautification Committee, Rotary, Cal Waste, the Galt Herald, the Coffee Shop Bakery, Tracy Cross, the A- through Z Foundation, Barbara Welch, Roxanne Babcock, Kiwanis LaHime, Brewsters, BMW Oak Grove, Galt High School, and Liberty Ranch High School. And of course, we had many, many others, so we really appreciate all the support that we got this year.
And lastly, congratulations to our outgoing and incoming commissioners, and our returning commissioners as well, so Alexa Morales-Cuevas and Alexa Scold, who unfortunately isn't here with us today, and congratulations to our incoming commissioners, Kason Jones, Mikey Brixey, Alexa Bullahan, and Karina Leon. I'm super happy to see you guys come into our commission, and I look forward to, you know, getting to know all of you and working together with you. And I'm really sad to see you guys go, but Star Enriquez, Damaris Ramirez, and Isabella Sosa, they really helped me grow, get in, like, you know, just really helped me get into this commission and, you know, like, helped me fit in and learn how to do many things as a commission, and this was honestly a really great experience to be in this commission, and I'm thankful for them. And I just want to add congratulations and good luck with your future endeavors.
It's actually Alexia Bullahan. It's really tricky because we have Alexa, Lexus, Alexia this year, it's going to be tricky, but... Are there any questions that we could answer?
Any questions from council for the young ladies?
No, I just want to thank you for getting involved. It's quite clear that it was beneficial for you, and I'm curious, maybe, what do you do to encourage other citizens to join?
Well, a lot of times, we make sure to post about things that we're doing. We also, I personally reach out to my friends and tell them about what I'm doing in the commission, but also inviting them to the events that we're going to be at. Do you guys want to answer?
Like, such as events as, like, Easter Extravaganza, we'd like, you know, really, I really connected with a lot of, like, Galt, like, members of the city, and, like, we try to get them to join and, like, participate in our future events, using our, like, fundraising events and such.
Yeah, through the different clubs and organizations that are already present, like Rotary or the Teen Center or whatnot, they have teens in it, and we, like, say, hey, you should help out with this, or even NHS or Interact. I'm in NHS, and I usually tell them about what we're doing, so it's helpful for us to, like, tell different organizations that already have people in it, but also, like Alexa was saying, we post about it on Instagram, and I think that helps because when you reach out to the parents, they usually tell their kids, and like, hey, you should join, you should join, and encourage them, so reaching out to the parents really helps encourage the kids.
Are there any more questions?
The only thing I would like to thank you for, the outgoing commissioner, and welcome and congratulations all newcomers. Thank you.
I just have a comment. Thank you for your service. You know, last year and years past, we looked through the applications, and many of you who apply for this commission are also doing probably a million and one other things in your life, right?
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah, and so to perform at the level that this commission performs with the help of the adult mentors, you guys are doing a great job. Appreciate your involvement and continued success.
Thank you very much, and thank you, city council, for the opportunity to present today and be in the Galt Commission. Are there any more questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say again, congratulations to the new mentors. I want to thank the adult mentors for Ms. Lamson, Mr. and Mrs. Hill, and Mr. Harris for all volunteering, but I want to say what you guys do is really being a mentor to your peers, and so I think that's important to lead by example and get other people your age wanting to get involved in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing, I want to say thanks to Amy Sando for the air fire during the Easter Extravaganza fundraiser. We had a big turnout, and thank you for, thank you all, like, the council members for always feeding us after anything we do. It's great.
Think of us when you're doing your budget this year. But just in case some of the council members, like Vandenberg, don't understand, we have, we're only allowed 10 commissioners, so that's what's in our charter, but this year we had 14 applicants, and we had six open spots. So last year, we couldn't fill it because of COVID or whatever, we didn't have enough applicants, we only had nine, and so this year, we had an abundance of applicants, so the kids, it was really because the kids got the word out to their friends and all those public events that they did to encourage some people to join, so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on now to Item D, your public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Okay, do we have any public comment this evening?
We have one comment, Tracy Skinner.
I'm on the elementary school board, but I'm also here tonight just as a parent and community member, and since you guys are going to be talking about your budget, I'm hoping that you can keep in mind, just in light of recent events, any funds that we could, you know, be set aside for school safety, possibly more SRO officers, you know, I think would be really beneficial, and I know there's major R funds or general fund, but if you guys could keep that in mind when you're looking at your budget, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Do we have any additional public comment?
No other public comment.
Okay, any, we're still taking comment online, too, right?
Yes.
Nothing online, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, with that, we'll move on to Item E, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Start with Vice Mayor. Mr. Sandu?
Mr. Mayor, I have to report a couple things. On June 1st, we have a STA board meeting. We adopt a final STA budget fiscal year 2022-2023. It was a continue from the item May 12, 2022. And we still have a vacancy on Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee if somebody want to apply it. Then the last thing on the STA meeting is we have an appointment of the Sacramento Transportation Authority Executive Director will assume the role in, the new executive director on July 1st. His name is Kevin Buciam. And I also attended the South Sacramento Conservation Agency Joint Power Authority on May 23, 2022. Authority for continuation, authorizing for continuation of a remote teleconference meeting. We also adopted a resolution adopting the Sacramento Habitat Conservation Agency fiscal year 2022-2023 budget item. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papino?
Yeah, on May 26th, we had the Sacramento Regional Air Quality District Board meeting. Highlights were, some of you may have seen a news story, that our district was graded down into the severe non-attainment region for air quality districts, and it was pointed out, and there was a response printed in the local newspaper up in Sacramento, that pointed out that the air didn't actually get worse, but the standards continued to get stricter, and that's where that downgrading came, so, you know, the goal is still there, but that was worth pointing out. And then we adopted a new budget, $76.5 million budget, continuing to eat up reserves and try to find a way to keep up with the state mandates. And then another highlight where some of that money has been going, there's been a pretty big push to put cleaner vehicles into the school districts, and the district put $3.2 million into Twin Rivers School District and $1.28 into Dry Creek to outfit them with clean air buses, and that was the highlights of that meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the groundwater authority meeting. We now have a citizens advisory committee. We're looking for long-term funding, both grant and local agencies. We did not, unfortunately, finalize our budget. We're moving closer to implementing positive action on groundwater recharging. That was the extent of it. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Lozano?
Yes, I had a SACOG board meeting and a couple of transportation committee meetings for SACOG that I'll start with. We also approved our final budget for next year, which is about $39.5 million. Most of that is pass-through money from the state and federal government, but there is a chunk that comes from our citizens here locally that help fund transportation projects. We also went over a review and analysis of the citizens' transportation tax that is slated to be on the November ballot and how it would really, how it would affect, as written today, our ability to attain the 19% greenhouse gas emission reduction, and so more to come on that in the future. I also happened to attend a lunchtime meeting with SACOG that had to do with, you know, vehicles that are gas-neutral, so electric, hydrogen, and I did hear about the Air Quality Board and their providing funding for buses and things, so I passed that link on to staff to take a look at, to see if there might be something that we can do here locally for charging stations or, you know, maybe even some neighborhood electric vehicle funding or something like that, so. And we have a SACOG board meeting this Thursday, I'm sorry, on the 16th, so a week from this Thursday, and I'll report back out on that when, at the next meeting, so, thanks.
All right, thank you, councilmember. I myself didn't have any official meetings, but I did attend Liberty Ranch High School, was invited to view the CTE program. Vice Mayor Sandu also attended, and we met with some state and regional leaders and people that were involved in that, took a look at those programs, pretty phenomenal, so I appreciate the invite from Superintendent Pettis. And with that, we will conclude our reports from commissions and committees. Moving on to our consent calendar. It is recommended that Items 1 through 9 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Is there anything from council?
So, as I jumped the gun earlier, but for Item 6, I believe it is, F6, let my vote or let the record show that my vote will count for Items 1 through 5, 7, 8, and 9, but not 6.
Okay, councilmen, we'll do them separately, I think. Do I have anything else from council on the consent calendar? Okay, well, with that, I will be looking for a motion to approve Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, and 9, and they are: Notice of the Regular Meeting for May 17, 2022. Item 2 is receiving file warrants for a period ending May 26, 2022. Item 3 is a city council meeting of July 5, 2022, and the canceling of these meetings for July 5 and August 2 of 2022. Item 4 is the C Street Enhancement Project, CIP 520F, Notice of Exemption from California Environmental Quality Act. Item 5 is going to be the approval of Senate Bill 1, Annual Project List for Fiscal Year 22 through 23. Item 7 is going to be the Implement Storage, Implement Shortage, Level 2 of the City's Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Item 8 is the Authorization to Purchase the Vacuum Item 8 is the Authorization to Purchase the Vacuum Splush Water Truck in the amount of $743,356 plus additional sales tax and licensing fees. And item 9, Approval of the California Environmental Quality Act Amendment, or Addendum to the Mitigated Negative Declaration for the City of Galt Live Oak Pump Station and the Forest Main Replacement Project. Do I have a motion to approve those? Mr. Mayor, make sure you go to public comment. Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir. Do you have any public comment on the consent calendar?
No public comment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Do I have a motion to approve those eight items? Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent, items approved 4-0. Now move on to item 6 on the consent calendar, which is the Galt Landscape and Lighting District's Engineer Report, Intention to Levy and Collect Assessments for Fiscal Year 22 to 23, and Set Public Hearings. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Item approved 4-0. I want to make correction. The first items were approved 5-0. Right. I made a mistake and said 4. Apologize for that. All right. Moving on to item G, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
No public hearings.
All right. Moving on to item H, our regular calendar. Couple, three items. First one's going to be, from the State Manager's Office, is the Proposed Fiscal Year 22 to 23 and the 23 to 24 Budget Study Session. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're going to cover budget items with item H1, and then we'll come back and talk a little bit about more aspects of the budget with item H3. So tonight is essentially a open forum for council to ask any follow-up questions, resolve any lingering issues, and to give us some sanguine direction on the resolution that we'll be bringing back to you on Tuesday, June 21st. And so I'll be looking for just some input and direction on the budget. But meanwhile, before we get into the budget discussion, there are just some follow-up items that I would like to discuss with you regarding the budget. And these are bore out of the results of some conversations that I have with the members and with the public. So Tina, can you go to the final budget items, please? All righty. So the first thing I wanted to present to the council and to the public, and go to the next slide, please, the results of the Get Involved Galt Community Survey that's going on right now. We so far received 501 survey responses. And just letting folks know that, you know, the big items are retaining and attractive quali, attracting qualified police officers, maintaining 911 emergency response, preventing property crimes, protecting clean local drinking water sources. And so these are sort of the items that we're testing right now. Wanted council and the public to see how all of them are faring. All of them are pretty strong. And I wanted to also let the public know that these preferences, these items are also built into the biennial budget. And so all of these items are being funded in one way or another. So I wanted council to see that. Next slide, please. You can go to the next slide. Next slide? Next slide? Thank you. And so the other issue that I wanted to put before council is the issue with the commissions and committees. And so there are three commissions and committees that typically have requested funding. The Beautification Committee last received funding during the 2018-2020 fiscal year, totaling $3,340. In 2014-16, they were provided with $3,150. COVID happened during the years 2021, and so they were not provided funding during that time. The current revenue balance, or the current revenues that the committee has access to, is zero. The next group is the Commission on Aging, last received funding for 2018 through 2020 totaling $9,100. And 2015, 2016, they receive $1,700 or $1,800. And the current revenue balance that the commission has access to is $2,099. Next slide, please. And then there's the Galt Youth Commission, who we just saw. And they last received funding for 2018-2020 totaling $5,000 over that biennial year. Prior to that, they received $2,500 during the 2016-17 fiscal year. Their current revenue balance, and a lot of this has to do with their fundraising activity, is $7,420. So the question I have for council is, do you, the Commission on Aging has approached council with a budget that allows them to do certain programmatic functions and allows them to, it is requesting additional city funding, and they would use that along with the grant funding that they have leveraged for various functions. My question to council is, do you want me to reach out to the Youth Commission and the Beautification Committee and ask them to submit a budget request as well?
Counsel?
I had one question back to Commission on Aging. They had or have grant funding coming from SMUD?
Yes, they have grant funding coming in, and I think Director Solis can elaborate on that.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, they received a $3,500 a year for three years from SMUD, starting this fiscal year. So in July, they'll get another $3,500. We've received the first installment, so.
So that's not reflected in the $2,099 that they currently have?
No.
No. No.
So it did not reflect any of their current budget requests in the numbers that you see before them, because it is still a request?
Right.
What was the request that they asked for? No, it was more than that. It was, forget.
I believe it's closer to $5,000 is what they were asking for. If I, I don't have that number exact, but I believe it was in that $5,000 range, because I knew the SMUD grant would cover the things that they wanted to do. And that's where we felt that it was more appropriate.
I just asked because if they have $2,000 and they're going to get $3,500 more, that would be 55. So if they have, if their needs are $5,000, I'm just curious why they would have asked for budget allocation, unless it was not 5. I don't know.
As I remember, the meeting and the request was that they wanted us to consider the $5,000 outside of their grant opportunity. And so the money that would have, they were requesting would set aside the $3,500 per year for three years.
Personally, I would look forward to supporting the Commission on Aging, but I think it would be nice if we actually had a monetary value to vote on instead of just a random, an unknown value.
Well, the question that I'm putting before the council is, the commission appeared before the council about a month ago, and with a list of items that they wanted funding and a funding request. And so they essentially have placed that in front of council for their consideration. My question to council is, do you want me to give me, do you want me to give the same opportunity to the Beautification Committee and the Youth Commission? So we have some equity to the equation.
I think, I think I would support, in all fairness, we would, we should. I would be supportive of doing some sort of baseline number for all the commissions. I think, you know, like, for example, the Youth Commission, you know, they have the ability to really get out there and fundraise. With the beautification, and not to say that these commissions couldn't do something, but it's less likely that maybe Beautification or Commission on Aging would fundraise, just based on history, whereas Youth Commission's more active in that. But I think that they would all be deserving of some sort of baseline. I'm looking at numbers. Looks like the Galt Youth Commission was given $2,500 in previous years. And then there was, Beautification was given $3,000, and the Commission on Aging was given $17,000. So I mean, thinking maybe like a medium, like some kind of medium in there. I would, I would be supportive of, like, maybe we could see if we could give each committee and commission, like, $2,500 or something. But unless they don't ask for it. But again, I don't know. That's just my initial thoughts. I'd like to hear from the rest of council.
I'd like to see, if they desire to put in a request, I'd like to see it come with somewhat of a line item and a justification for the amount that they would request.
Isn't that typically how it's done?
That's typically how it's done. However, the commission submitted a memo that takes more the form of talking points, and it's not really a budget proposal. I did find the talking points. They were asking for a total of $6,150 outside of the grant funding that they received. And there, it was for a number of items, quarterly lunches, fundraising activities. There's just a number of items in here. And I would prefer, just my preference, is that if there's a budget submission or a budget request that comes before the council, that that be clear and concise and consistent amongst the commissions and committees. And that way, you know, everything is looked at in a sort of an apples-to-apples format. And so that's the question I'm asking.
I agree with you, and I agree with Mr. Papinow as well. The Commission on Aging came and gave a passionate plea of why and what they want to use the money for. So I would be supportive of that. But we have not heard that from the other two items, so just want some kind of justification for spending.
Could we, could we, sorry, go ahead.
And then same thing, I'm going to piggyback Mr. Vanderburg, because if some, any, any organization need anything, they have to address, they have to bring the request. And I also want to agree with the mayor. You know, these organizations may be very close, whatever, we can, 2,000, between 3,000, whatever, we can afford in a budget.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just got word from the city clerk, who's my historian, that apparently during the rough times that we had financially, the ability for the commissions to come before council was somewhat deferred, because we were going through tough financial times. And so my question to you all is, do we want to reinstate that practice? But again, have a little more clarity and make sure that the budget submissions are pristine, so to speak.
Yeah. I think, obviously, they have to present what they're, come with the budget, and it has to be very, you know, it has to be structured and say what they're going to use the money for and so on. Correct me if I'm wrong. Tina, I think there wasn't like a certain amount. There might have been like a cap, but different commissions came and asked for different monies, right?
Yes, they were given an opportunity around April or May of each year to bring their proposals forward, submit it to City Council. City Council either gave the amount they requested, a portion of it, whatever they felt was right.
Right. So if we did something like that, but maybe, was there a cap? Do you remember?
I believe there was, it was capped at $10,000, maybe.
Well, I don't think they're ever going to ask for that much.
I know, but that was what's in the past.
I would, I would be supportive of them, of bringing that program back, but with some sort of reasonable cap, I think. I mean, based, maybe historically, we can figure out what the cap should be, you know, and then maybe go on that. Any, just to be fair, but that's just my input.
I would recommend just throwing a number out there, maybe 4,000 per committee?
Well, I mean, looking historically, I mean, what were the numbers that were? It's hard, because we only got, well, 16 and 17 in some of these, you know.
Right. I'm just looking for a place to start.
Yeah.
And then, as the year goes on, and if there's a need from the commissions and committees, council always has the ability to provide more funding to them as.
Well, it looks like last time funding was given to the Youth Commission in 2018. It was 5 grand. Commission on Aging last received 9, which was pretty high. And then Beautification got 3,300. I think 5 is a happy medium. I mean, but that's just me. I think 5 is an even number. I, it's probably very likely that you're, you're not going to get, the commissions asked for all that. A lot of them are going to be lower, so I don't foresee us having to give out 5 to all the commissions.
Okay.
That's just me. Other people? Council?
Just looking for some sort of informal consensus, so I can give them some general direction.
I think 5 is fine. Very close.
Okay. And they, and I will make sure that they all know that you have to justify. Yeah. You asked for 5, we're going to, we need you to justify that.
Well, I could support that. If it's justified, I don't want to just pass it out willy-nilly.
Well, I mean, justified meaning that they present a budget saying what they're going to do, and not, not, I just want to be clear on what the word "justifies" means. It's an subjective term.
Justified means that the, for every dollar that's being spent, we need to know what project, what outcome, and the purpose of the spending. Because these, these, these commissions and, these three commissions and committees are intended to enhance life here in Galt. And so we need to, we need to understand how each part of this budget request improves the quality of life in Galt and carries on the mission of these committees. And thirdly, how does that allow that commission or committee to interface with the public to bring feedback back to the council? Because they're all advisory committees to the council. So that's their primary purpose. And so those are the three items that I'm looking for. How does it help the citizens of Galt? How does it carry on their mission? And, and so those are the things that we'll be looking at. And those are the sort of the general areas of justification. And, and so it won't be a, you know, a very intense process. It just needs to pass those three sort of test.
Right. And they'll, they'll come forward to council, and if council has concerns and saying, you know, that item doesn't sound like that's really.
Exactly.
Right. So they'll be at the council discretion to approve those budgets that's brought forward.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I just want to make sure that we present a product to you all that that's clearly stated and that the justification is also clearly stated, given those three parameters that I just laid out to you.
Any concerns of, are we fine with, Mr. Heinz? Okay.
Okay. So generally, a $5,000 cap, those three parameters. And so we'll get word out to the commissions and committees. And given the tight timeframe, we will also help them, you know, put their proposals together. And, Clark Hubert, if you could go to the next slide, please? So another item that we had a previous discussion about was upgrading our Christmas tree lights. And we had not built this into the budget, because it was still an item for a discussion. But I, my thinking is, my thinking, well, sorry. My thinking is that we still are, we still have access to one-time ARPA dollars. And clearly, there was a need or a desire for an upgrade in our Christmas decorations that we heard with the last, last holiday. And so Armando Solis and his team provided a number of options. And Director Solis, do you want to go through the slides?
Yeah.
No problem.
It's easier for me to explain.
Sure.
So we have four areas that we've covered. The first one is the tree. We've had a lot of comments on the tree. This isn't exactly what we would be purchasing, but it's just a picture of an idea. The total was $26,000 for lights, decorations, et cetera, for that. If you go to the next slide, we have those, for the traffic lights, we have the old nutcrackers, the soldiers up there that are really trashed and I think are older than my son, who's 28. And so this would replace those at this intersection, C in Lincoln and A in Lincoln. That's a cost of $11,000, so for 12 of them. Can you guys go with me? Okay. Now, this Christmas tree lighting would be added to this area here. We'd put that at, on C Street, right at that little Y here. little Y here. It's right in front of the building next to the Ton Memorial. That's thirteen thousand. And then, this would be placed at Shebola Hills, at Shebola and Lincoln. We would remove the candlelight sticks that, that were up there that people keep complaining about, that are tacky. So, we would do a big area right there on Shebola Hills as they enter. So, we'd hit both entrances into downtown, Lincoln and Shebola, and C Street and Civic. So, that's the total, depending on if you pick all four, or if you can pick and choose which ones you'd like to have.
Counsel?
This is with ARPA funds?
That's the recommendation, sir.
Okay. And then, I just want to double check. And then, so this would be the end of those candles?
We would get rid of everything we have now.
Okay. I, I fully support that.
Yeah.
Those are way past due, about twenty years past due.
Exactly. I agree.
I'm gonna put my citizen's hat on right now and just ask a couple of questions that I think the public's probably thinking. And I know the answers to some of these, but talk, talk to me about the Christmas tree lighting. Why, why twenty-six thousand in lights? Can you explain why people are thinking regularly, they're thinking, well, Christmas lights, they don't cost that many. Can you explain that?
Everything's commercial grade. It isn't, we're not going down to Walmart and picking up a bulb. These are actually probably about four to six inches, depending on the price list that he came up. The lights are gonna be high-grade. I don't have that list in front of me, but everything's basically be commercial grade.
And I was gonna ask you what you think the life expectancy of this stuff is. I know that's subjective, but I know that we got, like, what, thirty, thirty years out of our old stuff?
Not, we, we did some, I think about eight years ago, we added some. But I, let me see, I'm gonna retire soon, so at least five years, we'll get out of that. No, just kidding.
No.
We'll, uh.
There'll be none of that.
I honestly, I, I think if we take care of it, and we, we really do, can easily go ten, fifteen years without a problem, should. Especially with the LED lighting versus some of the stuff that they had in prior years.
Well, I know as we sit up here and we talk about a lot of stuff with money, and we, you know, we obviously have to prioritize things. This kind of stuff, to some, may not seem very important, and, and I, I would agree that there's obviously lots of things we're gonna talk about tonight that are more important than this. But I, I think, you know, this is a quality of life issue. I, I think, you know, if we just said, let's just not have any fun or do anything like this in town anymore, then I think that would be a big downer on the community. I do like the fact that it's being presented by ARPA money, because to me, that's not coming out of our general fund dollars. I know we have, like, two, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hines, so this would come out of the two million and some odd change.
That is correct, sir.
Doesn't it? Okay. And this is, so this one-time money, this is not pouring concrete, as I refer to it. It's an ongoing expense. This is a one-time expense, at least one time for a few years, at least. So, I mean, if the council supports it as a whole, then I would support it.
You know, we've talked about trying to do stuff that, you know, we can put out and people can see and appreciate and beautify the city. Some of our, with the ARPA things, a lot of it's restricted in what we can and can't do. But I think, given that this is coming from ARPA and the pandemic response policies, tried to squelch two Christmases. I have no problem with using that pandemic money to boost Christmas a little bit for the community. So, I'd support it.
And then, council have comments?
Yeah, I, I will support on that. This is clear, the eighty thousand dollars, you can use these commercial grade, right? So, it can be a long-lasting.
Yes, that quote is through Decalite, a company that we've purchased from before. So, those are quotes that we did receive from them.
Thank you. And I will support that.
Armando, off the top of your head, how, how many times or how long ago do you think you guys came and asked to upgrade these decorations and stuff? Have you ever done that before?
We have. Steve Rudolph was the interim city manager, and he's the last one who approved any money for it.
Okay. Well, there's any further comments from council? I think we've done hearing that part of the presentation.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, very good. Thank you. I will take that as a consensus, and we will be sure to add that into the, into the ARPA budget when we bring the budget back to you all on the twenty-first. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes this portion of the, the PowerPoint that I have. I do have some slides related to item H3, which we'll get into when we get into that. So, I'm going to conclude this now, and, and basically ask council, are there any questions regarding the other parts of the budget? Any of the issues in the other twenty-seven funds that you feel strongly about, that you want to give me direction on? Any other requests? And so, all the staff is here to.
Do we see, could we, do we have any public comment on the budget? I'd like to hear if there's any comment before.
No public comment.
Okay. All right. Council, does anybody want to bring anything up particular, or?
I do, but can you give me, like, a minute?
Sure.
I gotta find it in my notes.
I'll, I'll burn a minute for you. On the request I had for unfilled positions, now, correct me if I'm wrong, I probably should have brought it up, but I thought I'd had a minute. For the accounting position, that would be over, over and above previous historical highs of twelve, right? That would be a thirteenth?
Yes, yes.
And that, that, the monies for that position are in this budget, when we're talking about revenue totals?
Yes.
Or not revenues, but.
The expenditure totals, yes.
So, I would like to see that position removed permanently. I don't know, Mr. Splendario, I don't know how that would have to sound, or I guess I should ask if I have support from you, council?
Meaning, meaning the position itself, meaning that you are proposing not to fund that position. The position itself exists, but it is not funded, so.
Well, that's, that's why I asked for clarification. Is it, is it funded in the upcoming budget?
It is in the funded, it is funded in the upcoming budget, yes.
So, if that position is removed, we have, we have more money to work with.
Yes.
That's what I'm proposing. So, how would that sound, Mr. Splendario, if?
Yeah, I think you just phrased it the way it, it needed to be phrased.
Does that make sense to my fellow council members?
So, your concern, Mr. Vanderburg, is that, so the, the position was approved, was created, but it wasn't funded. So, by doing that, the fund, the money is allocated, but it's just not funded. So, like, when vacant positions, every year when we have vacant positions, that actually a position that exists, if it's vacant, the money is still earmarked in the budget for that. It's just not put, it's not paid for the, is that correct?
Right.
Right. So, I think, I think what, I think what Mr. Vanderburg is trying to say is, you, you are not just talking about not funding the position, you're trying to free up that money from the budget.
Yeah, that's why I wanted clarification before I said.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that, so that hundred and fourteen thousand in the current year and a hundred and fourteen thousand in the budget year are built into the long-term financial plan expenditures. And so, that surplus that you see at the bottom of those two years would grow if funding is removed for that position. However, I should at least leave you with this, this thought, that the number of government accounting standards and the pressure on your finance team are mounting. Director Boring, how many applications do we have for the accounting manager right now?
We've received three so far.
Okay. And how long's it been open?
Um, close to a month.
Okay. So, I've got folks in finance that are working out of class. So, even though those dollars will be removed from the new budget, finances budget will run over, because I've got folks working out of class. So, I'm just leaving you with that thought. But, council member, I understand. But just understand, in the mid-year, I will most likely come back here and ask you for an augmentation in finances budget. Okay? I'm just making sure you have all the information before you kind of give me a general consensus as to which way you want me to go.
As I always say, the best decisions are made with the most information.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was gonna, go, go, no, here, Doc.
Well, I, just considering our negotiations and, you know, how tight it is the budget, we're constantly trying to fill out a ten-gallon bucket with nine gallons. So, this is the way to give us a half a gallon. Go ahead, Mayor.
I was gonna say, I see that Mr. Boring was gonna say, so I was gonna let the vice mayor go first, and then, Mr. Boring, if you had a comment.
Yeah. And you know, this senior accountant position, I do have a concern. The reason a couple of months ago, majority of the council, they don't fund that position. If that position coming back after two months, I don't think so anything changed my mind, or maybe some other council members. It may be after a year is a different story, but after two months, we were whole council, not, not the whole, majority of the council is not, this position was not funded. And bringing back that position to consider a council, I'm, I'm not interested on that.
Mr. Boring?
I, I just wanted to add, like, the city manager mentioned staff working out of class. So, if it were removed from the budget, we would still need to address that, because we will have staff working out, or outside of class. So, we would have to figure out how to address that issue.
I, I, I think, I mean, I just, I would only like to share just my thoughts from when we talked about this before. It's, I mean, you, you, I think the, Mr. Hines and the finance department laid out a pretty, you know, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, a pretty clear, you know, they're trying to justify it. Was, we had some things that they needed to take care of. And so, I understood those, those, those reasons. Personally, back then, I just, my thoughts would be that we went from a finance department that, you know, we, I recently looked at a document which was presented at my request, and I think all of us were given it, where it showed, you know, the positions of the finance department pre-pandemic through, actually, probably pre-my role in council, probably from seventeen, I think it was, and through. And I mean, our finance department is basically staffed at the, at the peak of what it was. Well, except for the recent resignation or of one of, of whatever, I forget her position was recently, Ms. Nguyen. But, but we were at the maximum. So, we haven't even been at that many people since, I don't know, pre nineteen, twenty seventeen or something. So, I think, you know, the council said at that time, we, we came back, and there was a bunch of frozen positions that three of us here had done during the budget cuts of eighteen or nineteen. And we, we put all those back in place. And so, this was gonna go over and above that. And I think that was, there was just some concern at that point about going above and doing, like, again, I refer to, when I make a reference to pouring concrete, these are like things, you know, positions which are ongoing. These are not one-time, this isn't buying Christmas lights, this isn't buying a, a patrol car and PD or something. These are, these are things that are ongoing expenses. You, you create those, they come with, they come with strings attached, they come with pears, they come with whatever. So, you don't just, the reason they call it that is because you don't take them back. It's not easy to take them back. So, I, I'm very cautious about things like that, because we, again, we, we have the landscape thing. We were presented with some landscape options recently about what it would take to bring landscape. And we kind of talked about it, and then we didn't do anything about it yet. And so, I, I just, I feel like, you know, the finance department, we've, 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 you know, we did some positions there, and now we're at a point where I'm feeling that there's other things that I would like to see, if we're gonna be, like, committing money for long-term outside of this position. So, I mean, I understand what Councilman Vanderburg's saying. I also understand what staff's saying, with the need for the position. But, I mean, I just had a, you know, a school board member talking about how we want, you know, we want to see more SROs. As Chief Kalanowski knows, I've been asked, you know, I've been wanting to see another SRO for a while, and I'm, you know, and I know that's something that we could possibly get at some point. But these are things from the community that, that are asked for. And so, I, I just think a hundred and fourteen grand could maybe be served somewhere else right now, a little better, at least for now, before we get these other issues taken care of. And that's just my two cents right now.
We, we do have public comment now? Do you want to hear it?
Okay. Go ahead. Does that find, does anyone want to speak before a public comment, or?
Uh, I can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can hold off.
Okay.
Public, okay.
That's fine.
All right. Is it in the room or on the phone?
On the phone.
Okay.
Mr. Soder, can you hear us? Jerry Sodder's.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear? Oh, thank you. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. Jerry Soder, Galt resident. Thank you to the staff and everyone for the budget proposals. I just wanted to kind of give the citizen perspective, as you're reviewing budget. Appreciate the council, you know, trying to, to free up money for, for, for things, and also balance the needs of, of the recommendations of city staff. But I know we have lots of residents that are concerned about some of the, you know, public facilities within the city, and especially, you know, following some of the social media things, and, and also just driving by myself, the condition of some of our landscaping, and some of our public parks, as far as the maintenance there. So, you know, I just think that, you know, those kind of things are like gas prices. They're the very obvious things. So, as, as, as citizens are hearing the council deliberate and, and have staff recommendations on budget, you know, we're thinking about how do the parks look, what's the condition of our roads, what's the condition of our public facilities. And so, just always want to ensure that those are taken into consideration. And I just want to add, that's kind of why I'm always a little leery about some of the, the grant money we spend on improvements, like the, the C Street project, et cetera, because we're, we're getting money to get stuff that we have to take care of. And then we get told as citizens, oh, well, there's not as much money as we'd anticipated for that, or that landscape and lighting district doesn't cover that, we don't have the money in the general fund. So, I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of, of taking care of our, of our public facilities as a priority, as well as some of the other things the citizens responded to on the survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soder. Mr. Papinow, you?
So, you know, with regard to that position, and I'll kind of, I'm gonna restate, you know, what I said. When we discussed it before, to be blunt, our finance department, leading up to twenty eighteen, drove us into that hole, frankly. We have righted the ship. We brought in the city manager, director with the expertise. We've hired a consultant who laid out how we should be doing it. Through all that, we have a appreciable surplus, not enough to cover the laundry list of things that we need to do, but they got us in the right place. And I know we want to, with all urgency, you know, fix the landscapes and, and get all that stuff done. But in my view, this is the infrastructure that keeps us on the road to be able to fund all that stuff. So, you know, I don't have a problem with this investment in the infrastructure to keep us getting more and more financially healthy, so that we can do all these things. You know, and frankly, they're, you know, like, Councilmember Vanderburg said, you know, we overturn every stone. And I think that these guys have done a phenomenal job of finding, finding ways to, to stretch our dollars. So, you know, I don't have a problem with, with certainly leaving the position in there. And a step further, I don't have a problem with funding it.
I, I won't take up too much time, because I've stayed this in the last, the last time we discussed it. I would agree that finance department and everyone there is working their, their, their very best, and has done a great job here recently in getting some things turned around. One of the things that hasn't been pointed out yet is that not only was there some professional judgment used by our city manager in the finance department, but certainly, an outside consultant was intentionally brought in to look at that, to see that that was the appropriate way to move forward. But I want to bring everybody back to the last, at least, three independent consultants' reports. There were some things in there that were very bothersome for me. And I, and I know the rest of the councils, we deliberated about it. rest of the councils, we deliberated about it for, for a while. And a couple of those things were easily resolved after the fact. And I, you know, one of my roles here is to ensure that I watch the public money and ensure that we're keeping up on our checkbook, and making sure that that's balanced monthly or, or whatever other rules are out there that, that the standards set forth. But our consultants said, and our auditors said both, you need a position in place, the one we're talking about, to ensure that those things don't happen again. And I'll just remind everyone, our finance department is going to be working with the auditor here in about 30 days, beginning the process for auditing our books for next year. Every year that I've sat on this council, we've had something to correct in that, in that, that report, and, and I believe that part of that is, well, let me just put, put it this way, I believe that if we have this position in place, as stated by staff, some of those errors won't be made. And I believe it's a small investment to ensure public trust that we're doing the right thing with the money. So I don't, I don't have a problem supporting the position. I would hope that the larger issue, and I won't belabor at this point, but the larger issue is that we can recruit for it, and recruit for any of our positions, because that is another issue we have. So I will leave it at that, and, kind of vague staff direction, but, you know, it's, it's something we need to be cognizant of moving forward.
Well said. I think everybody's expressed their opinion. As far as I can read, it's three to two to remove this position? Is that what, am I reading the council correctly?
Well, I want to circle back to Kevin and, I'm sorry, Councilman Papinow and Councilman Zano's comments, and, and I, I acknowledge what they're saying, and, but I just want to say again that, you know, we, you know, Mr. Hines came in and, and pretty much had the entire finance department was, was, you know, hired a bunch of new people and did what was needed to be done. We're two years in now, and when I, when I, when I say two years in, I mean, we're two years in, and we still have not fixed the root problem of what, of what we were dealing with in 18. And I keep hearing this referral to like, you know, previous finance departments got in, got us into this mess and got us into that. And I just want to state that I just get a little confused sometimes, because I hear comments about that, which I agree with, but then I also hear comments that we weren't in such a financial mess as we were made out to be, so I keep hearing conflicting statements made. But what I would like to say with this position is, look, I, I, you know, we, we brought back all the positions that we froze, and we have the finance department, again, at, at the highest level that it's been, and we're asking for additional positions, but yet we have yet to even address, I mean, we have some ideas being floated out, we have yet to address the parks and rec budgetary issues, and the lighting and landscape budgetary issues. And when, I know we're stewards of the, of city dollars, and we want to make sure that, and, and you guys are right, but what I see here is, and this is what I feel like I hear from, from the people in the public, whose money this is that we spend, is that, you know, they're asking for things like, you know, we want to see weeds get sprayed, and we want to see parks be back to a level that we, we saw before, we want to see, you know, better, they want to see additional traffic enforcement, they want to see, you know, you know, things like the, like I mentioned before, like the school resource officer, these are things that all could be done with that same money. I, I, I mean, I think we need to, you know, what I see is government wanting to spend more money on itself instead of spending money where the public's asking for it. I, I mean, I'm gonna refer to this survey that was just showed to us, and again, I mentioned this the other day, but this survey, I can touch on several things in here that, that, that are mentioned in there, and, and I think that I would rather see the money, heck, I'd rather see that 114 grand be put into the police department budget, and, and 50,000 of that help fund half of a school resource officer and see if the school district would fund the rest, or, or take the, you know, and then the other 50 go somewhere else. That, that's just my opinion. So for me, circling back again, the other thing that's really bothersome too is, when something comes to the council, and we all have our deliberations in the council, and the council doesn't always agree, we, clearly, we're in one of those right now, but when the council makes a decision, and we say this is what we're gonna, this is what we want, this is what we do, I don't like the fact when something comes back two weeks later and they ask for it again, and then we kind of talk about it, and then it comes back again a third time. I mean, we, we were clear that we didn't want the, the measure funded. I know Mr. Vandenberg's asking for something a little different, but for me, I just have a problem with the fact that we're even back here talking about it. It's like if mom says no, we go to dad, and we just keep going back and forth. I mean, it's a no for me, I'm not funding that position tonight, I'm sorry. I would like to see other monies put to more important things. If we can take care of those things, I would be more than happy to support that position come midterm, or come, you know, March or February, whenever we're gonna revisit this, but for now, I, I just, I would like to see some other things that the community's asking for.
So. I think I can answer your first question there real quick, about the, that our finance department made a mess, and on the other hand, we weren't as bad as we thought. And that's because our finance department didn't know what we had, and I think if they had, and we've been functioning at the level that we're functioning at now, you probably wouldn't have had to make all those cuts in 18. So I think, you know, that those two things, in, in my view, can be true, you know, and I, and again, I think that taking care of our finance department allows us to take care of all of the other things. Not doing it as a trickle effect and doesn't allow us to take care of those things.
So I have a consensus of three to two to remove the position.
Okay, any other issues? Thank you all for your comments. Any other iss, oh, we have public comment?
We have one more public comment online.
If you're there, state your name and speak.
Scott, Scott from Davis Cannabis, can you unmute your line?
If you're there, Mr. Robinson, speak.
Do you still want to make public comment? You want to come back to him?
Okay, why don't we move on? Any, any other items?
Yeah, Mr. Hines, I, I wanted to touch a little bit again on the, on the, since we are talking about budget and we're forecasting in, and I've, I've seen the budgets that PD presented, and that were presented on behalf of Measure R, and I, I like a lot of what's in there, most of what's in there, I don't have any problem with it, I, I see there's a lot of good resources in there, a lot of good, yeah, I guess, resources, we have several things that have been asked for. I, I just, I just would like to, again, to, to, to see if we could, I mean, I, I've been approached by school board members that are asking about, you know, better school safety, and, and again, it circles me back to something I've been asking for, for three years, is additional, you know, an additional Measure R officer. I mean, it's a split, it's a split position, so it's not very expensive for the city, it's 50 grand, it's a lot, but it's not 100. I would really like to see, if that's not something we could try to work into our budget right now, I'd at least like to see it in some sort of forecast for the, for the, for the 23, 24. I mean, I just want some sort of end game for that, when we could possibly do that. And I know that the chief, you know, is, chief, you're given a lot of discretion by city manager to, to, to manage your department, and I have the most respect for that, but I also think I have a duty as a council member to push forward things I hear from the community, and especially from elected officials on, on both school boards I've heard from with this, with this request. And so here I am, and I, I would like to, to have a discussion about that.
The SRO is funded 100% out of Measure R, correct?
It is split, I understand, between the city and the school district, but Chief Kalanowski will give us the background.
Right, that was my understanding, but I meant, just for our budget, we, it wouldn't come out of the general fund, it would be funded out of Measure R, that portion of it.
Yes, so currently, we have two SRO positions, and when the Measure R position was approved by the voters, one of those positions was solely funded by Measure R, and that position, there's no reimbursable. The second position, which is, the second SRO, is funded by Measure R, and then there's a revenue in the Measure R budget accounting for what the school district pays for that second position. But it's important for me to say the following, I still have two frozen police officer positions and a frozen dispatcher position to the tune of about 400,000 in the general fund that we need to address because that fills positions like the second traffic officer and the fourth officer on swing shift, and other things that are important for overall safety in the community, and we'll continue to work for that, including those two frozen officer positions, I have five vacant positions. So we're getting there, but we'll see where we land over the next 60 or 90 days, whether that traction will stay or not. So if we added another SRO position, that's gonna get in line behind the need to staff baseline patrol activities and make sure that I don't have vacant positions just burning overtime to fill a position. So it is a little bit of a balancing act, and sometimes we have filled positions, but I have long-term vacancies. We have one of those currently with Capri, and we could have others. So I could have the positions in play, but I lose two or three bodies at a time, that takes a hit. And so you've seen that with the traffic enforcement component that people have called for, and we're getting close to being able to have some traction on that. I think we just need to be methodical in the approach, and I don't discount the concerns about school safety because they are real concerns. The school district has a responsibility for school safety and hardening their facilities and paying those bills. I'm not so sure that the city is always responsible for the full burden of that. And so I think we need to look closely on if the city's gonna expend X dollars in the future, you know, is that a good use of, as some have suggested, of our resources, and it might be, but we need to evaluate to make sure that we get something out of that deal. And that we, I have sustainment in it, because it's not gonna do us any good if, if I have two, five, or seven SROs, but I don't have the staffing that sticks because I lose people where I only still only have two SROs. Not advocating either way, I believe school safety is very important, the mayor's correct about that, but I, I think there's more global conversation about how we deliver safety in the community and make sure that we have all those holes filled.
And just, just to be, you know, devil's or full view, having two SROs in City of Galt is like roughly a percentage, how much higher than the average city?
I don't know that I can give you a percentage higher than the average city. I live in Brentwood, I believe they have three SROs in a city 60-something thousand people, so I think it's all based on priorities is being articulated here and ability to fill positions and so on, so number of high schools in the community, things like that. So.
Well, I, I appreciate, I appreciate, chief, and, and I know, and I no way want to indicate that I would put an SRO position in front of a patrol position, I was just simply asking that, you know, in our forecast out, that we could, because I know with Measure R, it's, it's unique, for those of you that are watching and don't know, I mean, you would have to come before the council, Measure R is very specific, it's a general tax, you know, general specific tax, special tax measure, so the only latitude that we have to do is the council could at any time say, we want to add a, you know, patrol or add a SRO or whatever, and we could, we could, we could do that within Measure R, and I know Measure R's growing, and that's great news because we're, we do a lot with that money. I'm only simply saying that I would just like to see that have become a real discussion, and if it gets in line before other stuff, I mean, obviously, but, you know, I mean, we've been do, as you know, we, this, this council has done a lot, we, we've, you know, we, we've allowed you to create the captain's positions, and now we have some sergeants moving into lieutenant and patrol, and, and lower moving into sergeant, so I mean, we created that latitude in the department, which I think is good for morale and good for the department. But I'm just, again, trying to, you know, I just, I get a lot of concerns right now, and I know people get really hypersensitive right now when we have events like what happened in Texas and all the other things, and they get really sensitive about what are we doing with our school, what are we doing, and so I get that, but I just think it's, it is a good time to revisit and say, hey, an SRO is something, and only because, and this isn't about, this isn't about having a cop at the school with a gun, and I think you know this, chief, but just I'm saying this for the public, but an SRO is a mentoring program, I mean, these, this is, this is proactive policing, right? This is not reactive policing, these are SROs make, they influence the students that they're, that they see each day, they have positive role model presence with these students, and that's what I love about the program so much. Is it as important as having, you know, an officer on the street preventing crime? I'm not saying that, I'm just saying it's important. And so I would just, I'm only asking that we could just keep that in our minds moving forward with Measure R funds, and maybe when, maybe in March or February, if we could, if it's not something we could do now, put it in there, and I know if we put it in there now, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't get the position anyways, because we're trying to fund in front of that with other positions. But I would just like to see something at some point be worked in for an SRO position, and that's, that's all. I appreciate it, chief, thank you.
Yeah, and I've, and I've heard you in the past about that, and I'm hopeful we will get to a place where we have, you know, our robust staffing in place that allows us for that career development, but I will tell you, in spite of the events that have happened around the nation, specifically in Texas, when there are issues that occur, the organization does pivot and provide that support and that visibility and the things that reassure the parents that we're there and we're present, including yours truly. So we will continue to do that in spite of other challenges that we have as we move forward, and through the city manager I commit, we'll continue to look at how those models can look in the future, even if perhaps maybe it's a hybrid or something like that.
And I appreciate the, what you guys have done recently, and you, you've done with Mr. Hines, and having an extra police presence and visibility and all that, so, yeah, that doesn't go unnoticed, so, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So mayor, I'll continue having discussions with the chief, and when we believe it's appropriate, we'll be, we'll definitely bring that before you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So are there any other items or issues?
So just, can you, will we be, and I don't know where we left off, and maybe I'm just not, don't remember, but will we be visiting, I know we've, we're talking about, you know, the other things we're working on with ideas about lighting, landscape fixing and all that, but we, we did get a presentation recently about what it would take, what kind of money it would take with option, you know, we had different options represented from Mr. Solis, and I don't know where that got left off, I don't remember what, where.
Well, and we had a, we had a good discussion, Parks's baseline budget for FY '22, '23 is now sitting at about 400 and maybe $6,000, I believe there's a staff report, and, and 403,000. And so that gets us the level of services that we, we currently enjoy. In order to get to mowings every week and that sort of top-tier service, it would create, it would, there would be a need for another $500,000 annually in order to do that, and I think that tops $900,000. And so one of the things I would recommend is that we get through this budget process, but I have a long list of policy items that I wanted to put before council for discussion during August and September. Parks is at the top of that list, and so even though this discussion, and it was a great discussion, it, it is part of the budget discussion, but given the gravity of the situation, we've got to continue talking about this. The city has 21 parks, in my opinion, as the new guy, and that as money was available, we created more parks, and I don't know if there was any thought or reasoning about the long-term implications of the maintenance of those parks. And now we're in a situation where now we have to address it. You know, we've got LLDs that are using 1990 rates, so, and, and the LLDs are not dispersed evenly throughout the city, so we've got to figure out a way, so it's, it's a larger issue, it's a bigger issue, and so I think it actually deserves its own series of conversations. And then if we decide to do something or come up with a solution, then we do that in the public forum, if there's a need to amend the budget based on anything new, then we'll, we can amend the budget at any time and increase those services. A budget is just a plan. That's all it is. I usually don't like to amend it any more than twice a year, but um, but it is just a plan. But I think, given the gravity of the situation, uh, I would recommend we go with the baseline service, but when this budget is passed on the 21st, that first meeting in July, you're going to see parks back on the menu. And we're going to, because we need to keep discussing, you know, how do we figure this out? How do we solve this problem? It's a big problem. That's my recommendation, mayor.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. So if, if we, if, if we, if we pivot in July and come back and start talking about parks, any deci, any decisions that are made at that point about what we want to do, does it not then affect our budget that we just approved? I mean.
The budget that we, the budget that we're going to approve can be amended at any time during that biennial.
Okay.
So whatever we decide.
And I, and I, and I, I appreciate you, um. Go ahead, you got something to go ahead. Oh. Uh, I appreciate that. And like you said, it's just a plan. And I'm just, like I said, I'm three and a half years on my, and I'm three and a half years in on my term. And, and what to me is still was one of the main things that I wanted to see solved, you know, and not, and I'm not saying, you know, you haven't been here three and a half years, so, but I'm just saying, I've been here three and a half years and we still have yet solved this and we don't even really have a plan. We have some ideas, but we don't really have a solid plan and I just, it's, it is frustrating because I just don't seem like it's, it's that can, it just keeps getting bigger and we just keep kicking it. And now we're just pushing it down the road because it's so big. So I look forward to those discussions in July on this and see if we can't get something moving forward on this topic.
Mayor, I'll offer you this in hopes of somewhat mitigating your frustration. I think we've got more transparency on this problem now than we ever have. And so before we can, if you've all heard me say it, we can't solve it unless we can see it. And so I think thanks to Armando, I'm sorry, Director Solis and Director Boring and their staffs, I think that, you know, we can dissect and trisect, at least now we know where the problem is. Now the question is, how do we fix it? So we're further along and um, so I hope that helps. I, at least that's my best attempt.
Okay.
But uh, we're, we're, we are further along now than we ever have been.
So anything else from the council on the budget discussion before we move on? All right, and no public comment?
No, no public comment.
All right. Uh, move on to item D, or I'm sorry, item H2. Discussion and consideration of the resolution establishing the COVID-19 nonprofit grant program and appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act revenues to fund the program.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Amy Mendez, economic development manager. I am back this evening to talk about the COVID-19 nonprofit grant program. Couple of weeks ago, we were here and council approved the COVID-19 small business assistance program, which was launched on June 1st and we have, I think we're at about 15 applications now. So we are going to start um, reviewing those and sending them over for financial review. So look, I think we're off to a good start. We haven't had too many hiccups. The webpage is operational and that's moving along. So the next program that we are wanting to launch is the COVID-19 nonprofit grant program. Back in October, um, city council directed staff to allocate $150,000 of the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds to nonprofit assistance in Galt. The ARPA funds may be used by municipalities to provide support to nonprofit organizations which were negatively impacted by the effects of COVID-19. Staff, being me, um, have evaluated multiple COVID-19 nonprofit grant programs in California. I've actually talked to a couple of folks who launched programs. They really run the gamut um, of the way that they were put together and assembled from really, really complicated to um, really, really simple. And so I think we found a good balancing point with the program that we've put together. I did talk to roughly, I want to say eight nonprofits here locally and provided the program to them in draft form, just to get some feedback from them. And I did receive comments back from roughly six, I want to say. I spoke with the Lions Club, the Teen Center, the Sunshine Food Pantry, the Galt Sunrise Rotary, and they all provided some really good feedback um, on the program. I also reached out to LaHeim and the Historic Society, um, just to make sure that everybody had a chance to review it and make sure there was no giant glaring issues. So I did incorporate some comments from a few of those nonprofits and they are reflected in the program that you have in your packet. So the program as it's put together, um, really is open to nonprofits that are 501(c)(3) nonprofit status um, under the Internal Revenue Service Code. This would be corporations, associations, agencies, or faith-based organizations that have a 501(c)(3). To be eligible, organizations must obviously um, serve residents or businesses in Galt. They must be in good standing with the state of California. Um, they must demonstrate financial impacts directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic and that's the most important, I think, connection we're trying to make with this program. They, um, you know, examples of this would be increase in services provided. I know the Sunshine Food Pantry had been hit really hard during COVID, um, with providing food to those in the community. Inability to hold fundraising events, lots of our um, local um, nonprofits weren't able to hold some of their largest fundraisers. And so um, that could be a qualifying option there. Loss of revenue related to any government mandated shutdowns or increased costs in complying with reopening requirements. And then um, we also have this um, one option here for new projects or programs that would be assisting those impacted by the pandemic um, and its economic effects. So individuals in the community or families in the community, if there's a program that a nonprofit wants to create or a project they want to launch, this would apply to that as well. And they must provide proof of insurance. The grant amount for this, um, I did a little bit of research in trying to determine how many nonprofits we have. We have about 60 nonprofits that have a Galt address. Thirty-ish of those are religious organizations and then the other 30 are 501(c)(3) nonprofits that are offering um, assistance here in the community. With that, um, the range that we had put together was a minimum of 500 and a maximum of 10,000 available per organization. And that really is because we have some really small nonprofits that might want to apply. Um, and then we have some larger organizations that do a lot of um, beneficial things in the community. And so 10,000 was the max that we had placed on it. And I think the idea here would be the same as it is with the business program, where if we have an abundance of funding left over, we may look at applications to determine things that uh, maybe prohibited folks from qualifying or if there are larger projects that they wanted funding for that we weren't able to fund, but there's funds left over, we would um, look at modifying the program and potentially coming back to council. Basically, the um, um, application process, um, the applicant would provide a request for a grant amount and a description of how the requested funds will be lessening the financial hardships experienced by the pandemic. So how they were impacted. Request for funding can be made for new programs or activities, which is what I had mentioned just previously. Eligible costs um, that can be applied, this would be loss of earnings or decline in revenues, impacts of canceled fundraising events, um, costs associated with implementation of prevention or mitigation measures. The barriers or partitions that were put in place um, to distance folks or enhanced cleaning measures, testing, um, anything that had to do with employees and um, you know, PPE, things of those nature. The reimbursement of expenses related to the organization's response to COVID-19, this could be payroll and benefit costs or cost to retain employees through the pandemic. Funding for new projects or programs designed to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. For the application process, um, I am looking to open this on July 5th. I'm trying to get through some of the small business assistance applications first before launching this. So July 5th is the target date. It would be open for 30 days. This is a lot more simplified than the business assistance program in terms of the application and what would be um, requested. The webpage will be created very similar to what we did for the small business assistance program and an application will be available for download. We're going to have these actually not be submitted online. We are going to have them as a PDF fillable so that we can review them um, in-house, print them and be able to utilize them and modify them as needed so that folks can review them in-house. The complete and eligible applications will be reviewed by a panel which consists of myself and then a member of the finance department and from the Parks and Recreation Department. Obviously, finance has a little bit more insight on the financial side of things, but Parks and Recreation really has their thumb on the nonprofits in town and sort of understands what some of those needs are. We'll meet to discuss the applications and make recommendations to the city manager for funding. And the city manager will make the final award determinations. We'll begin marketing outreach efforts um, with direct contact to the nonprofits. One of the nice things about this, instead of having to do mailers to hundreds and hundreds of businesses, which I'm doing right now, um, we have access to all of them. So we know how to get in touch with them and we can provide them the information for the program. We'll do additional advertising on the city's social media platforms and through our newsletter. Honestly, you know, at the end of the day, the goal here is to get as much of this funding out to the nonprofits as possible and so being flexible and working with them, um, even in talking to some of the nonprofits. Particularly, I had a conversation with the Teen Center and there was a concern, you know, we just don't know how sophisticated some folks are in filling out applications and, you know, there's not a lot of them and so I think it'll be a little bit easier for us to handhold versus the small business assistance where we're anticipating to have several hundred applications come through. And so um, this, I think, a little bit more um, assistance that we can provide at the city level. And that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions that you guys might have on the program.
Council, do we have questions for Ms. Mendez?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Amy Mendez, you gave a excellent presentation and that's why we're asking for nonprofit. Uh, my just a clarification, uh, on the report you said, the staff said it's come from 500 to $10,000. And we have a 60 business, 30 is 501(c) and 30 other, right? Uh, what, because there is a minimum requirement. When the application passed the minimum requirement, then what kind of criteria you guys might be using from 500 to 10,000? If you can a little bit, give me the insight.
So if you review the actual program guidelines that are included in the staff report, I tried to keep the um, presentation short just because I didn't want to have to, you know, go into a lot of detail and, you know, bore everybody. But um, we are requiring that they provide us with their agency budget showing actual revenue and expenditures. We're asking for, and that's actually for 2019, 20 and 21, we kind of want to see what that looks like across the board. We're looking for current operating budget showing revenue and expenditure projections. Um, we're also looking for any assistance, other assistance that they received, um, whether it be um, paycheck protection program, economic injury and disaster loans, the California relief grant, which is still open and um, people are able to apply for. And so we also are asking questions about what it is that they're requesting funding for. So we're trying to ver, verify what the COVID-related loss is so that we have an idea of what we can fund them. And then if it's a new project, we're asking for how it's going to affect, um, you know, folks that are affected, that were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and how that helps them. So, you know, it's a, it's a comprehensive application. We're trying to gather as much information as possible and really looking at what that grant amount is to balance it so that we have an idea. And, you know, it might mean that we don't fund it fully. It might be that we don't see the justification for a full 10,000, but we fund it at five because we see the need for that amount. Um, so there's some flexibility built in.
Okay. But I'm trying, what if you 10,000 or make a decision 5,000 or 4,000? It can be depend on the, what kind of revenue you have or it depends on how many apply they have and how it can work. It can be.
It really, when they are, they have to apply and they have to give us a justification of what they are asking for. So us understanding, big picture, this isn't one of those, what was their revenue loss? I mean, we are looking for that though. That is something we are, you know, wanting to understand if they did have a significant revenue loss as a result of fundraiser that wasn't able to be held, like, you know, big crab feed that they do every year. Understanding what that revenue impact is, but also looking at other funds that they've received through other avenues, because there's been lots of other programs out there for nonprofits to receive funding through. So um, you know, I think it's, it's going to be a, you know, comprehensive sort of look at that.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Ms. Mendez, I, um, two questions. Um, kind of piggybacking on what the um, vice mayor was saying. I, I thinking, you know, if we had, if you had a, you know, 100, or I'm sorry, you said there's about, there's about 60 nonprofits and 30 of them are faith-based, so we, let's just say we end up with 30 that are, you know, like Rotary and, you know, your typical ones that come to mind when you think of nonprofits, Lions Club, you know, so on and so forth. At like a 7,000, let's say that they applied for, I know it's between five and 10, but let's say you had, you know, those all apply for seven. You're only talking about 20 organizations that would get that money. So I'm starting to think like, and maybe I'm wrong, I guess we won't know till we actually see what kind of applications come in, but I'm more, I'm concerned that maybe 150 isn't going to be enough. But maybe, or maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. I just feel like, um, I guess, I guess we'll see um, when it comes to the money, how, how, how quickly. So if, if someone applies for, let's say that we have an organization that applies for 10,000, they say, you know, and they justifiably prove that they lost $10,000 in potential, you know, fundraising or whatever, uh, and their costs, you know, together is 10 grand. Um, will you wait, will there be a time period where you'll wait to see how many other people apply before you start granting those, approving those 10,000?
Yeah, we're going to close the application period before we even review them. And so the idea would be that we're able to review them all together. And if we did fund all 30 of them with $150,000, we could grant $5,000 to each business or each nonprofit. So, you know, I think that this was a balanced amount. Obviously, not everybody's going to apply for $10,000. So there's some flexibility there. And I think too, you know, when we can look at it as a whole, it makes it a little bit easier for us to determine how we are divvying that money up. Obviously, if, you know, everybody applies for 10,000 and we don't have the money for that, we're going to try to determine what the best route is to um, reduce those amounts based on what the need is by each of those applicants.
Right. Okay. And then my second question was um, it, just the parameters of the program and where it is going to be reviewed by some, some community development staff. So this is different, this differs from the business program because of the business program, you're having an outside entity review the financial documents and so on, right? And how is that, but you don't think that'll be the case with this program because you won't, there won't be financial doc, you're not going to have people that are saying, I'm not comfortable with having, you know, people in the city staff look at their financial documents or do you think it's, what's different then?
We're looking for revenue and expenditures. We're not asking for tax information.
Okay.
And so it's just really budget information that we're trying to collect. Um, and I did, you know, actually had one nonprofit who said, I don't know if we would apply because we wouldn't want to um, provide that information. That might be something if we have funding left over, we come back to council and say, because we have to pay a consultant to review every single application right now. And it's, it's not cheap. And so, you know, we're trying to be cognizant of that and, you know, this is a much less complicated um, overview and, you know, we're not reviewing tax returns, we're just looking at revenue and expenditure information for each um, entity. And like I said, with 30, it's a lot more manageable for us to do in-house versus going outside to a consultant.
And so where I was going with this question is that, but in part was that the parameters of this, you know, that you're, it's reviewed uh, by some staff and then, and then, and then uh, our city manager has the final say uh, in that. So, and again, I don't know, and Mr. Splendario would just totally stop me if I'm kind of crossing over, but finding out now how this differs from the other program, my question would be if we have a third-party reviewing program, the other program, but the city manager has full discretion at ultimate decision-making, what, what, what criteria, Mr. Hines, would you be using to make that final decision if you're not able to see the documents from the other?
Well, I'll, I'll base the information on the analysis that's given to me by Ms. Mendez. Well, I'll base the information on the analysis that's given to me by Ms. Mendez. And then I'll make that decision at that time, knowing that that decision will be, I'm sure, scrutinized and I will make sure that we'll have proper justification. The other difference is the nonprofits, their tax returns are in the public domain. Okay? So I can go find a Form 990 for any nonprofit in this town and tell you what their taxes were. I can't do that for the private indices, the private businesses.
Right. And I think, and I think that's why this question, and that's why I looked to Frank because I'm, it's, we're talking about the nonprofit. And I think what I'm finding out, listening to this and realizing that there's that verbiage in there is, I'm kind of referring to the business program, like, how would you be able to, because you're not able to see those. So maybe this discussion could happen outside because I know we're not talking about the business program right now, it's off-topic. But I just, I had, I had someone present that to me and it clicked in my mind right now, it was like, well, you know, how, if we have a third-party reviewing our things, then, so we can talk about that off.
I think too, that one clarification is that the city manager's discretion, yes, at the end of the day, he has this like final approval on everything, but it's pretty black and white. We know what the revenue loss is and what they, what they qualify for under the program, and that's what their grant amount is. They can't qualify for more than what their, you know, whatever their max amount is in the, in the category box. The city manager's discretion will be applied, though, to determining targeted businesses versus non-targeted. And so I think that's when that will come into play. We do have some gray area there with businesses who were, you know, they don't fit in the hospitality or restaurant or drinking establishment or, you know, under the category of entertainment might be a little flexible. And so I think from that perspective, we will, you know, ask him for some assistance there. Or I provide a recommendation and he gives me his, you know, approval on it.
Like I said, my question was geared more towards the other, and I just apologize, it was presented to me after we had approved the other program. So again, this will be open for, we are going to try to open it July 5th. If we approve it tonight, it'll be open for how many days?
30 days.
30 days, okay. All right. Does anybody in the council have any questions for Ms. Mendez on the program?
I have a comment. I appreciate the outreach you did with the nonprofits. I did receive several telephone calls about this and wanted to publicly thank you for your work on this, along with all the other things that you're responsible for. My, I love the fact that this is out, it was a great staff report, very thorough. Having been a part of several nonprofits in the past in executive board positions there, this is going to be easy to do. And, and I appreciate that because, you know, I'm just thinking back, if, if the youth sports league that I was involved with had to do this, we could click a couple buttons on a computer, you know, all that would come up. I may even provide my tax information from that league, say, here's what we have. So it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be easy to do. And I appreciate you offering the help to our nonprofits because not, not all of our people that are involved with nonprofits have the finance background or anything like that. And so I think this might help get, you know, get more applicants. So appreciate it. Thank you for your work on this, and I would rather get this out sooner than later, so...
If we get the business program moving forward and we can get that sort of in a flow with the financial consultant, then absolutely, believe me, I'd rather get it open and out there and be able to get that moving and closed and done with and beyond.
Sure. So, thank you. And when the time for motion is appropriate, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Well, if anybody else has any comments, if not, I will look for a motion. Okay? All right. Well, with that, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the City of Galt COVID-19 Nonprofit Grant Program and appropriate $150,000 of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds to the program. I have motion by Councilmember Lozano. Have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Resolution's approved 5-0. Our last item is going to be H3, and it's going to be the May 19th, 2020 Urgency Ordinance Regarding the Transient Occupancy Tax. Mr. Hines?
Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I can make a statement. Out of abundance of caution, I will be recusing myself from TOT portion of this discussion only due to my hotel business interest in this city. So...
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm going to leave. This is the last item, or?
Well, we have council comments and stuff, so we'll call you back in. Yeah. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Hines.
So members, when we last spoke about the TOT, council was informed that back on May 19, 2020, the council adopted an urgency ordinance to suspend payment of the transient occupancy taxes from our hoteliers. At the, at this time, we estimate that roughly $280,000 in TOT has been deferred by the two hotels operating in Galt. The third hotel has been paying their TOT all along. So if the city were to end the emergency, the hoteliers would have until the end of the next quarter to pay the outstanding TOT owed to the city. And so that's written into the urgency ordinance. We reached out to, to the two hoteliers who would be subject to this payback. The consensus between the two hoteliers is that there's a preference for a nine-month payback versus a six-month payback. And current law indicates that it's a six-month payback, which means that if we pass an ordinance, it'll be effective July 1st, which enables the hoteliers to pay us back on December 31st, 2022. That's the six-month option. What the preference is, based on the consensus between the two hoteliers, is a nine-month option. And so if we choose this option, we'll have to make the action effective October 1st, 2022, which enables the hoteliers to end, basically pay us back by the end of the first quarter of 2023. Can't believe we're saying that already. The first quarter of 2023 to defer their TOT. So those are the two options that we're putting before council right now. If there's sort of a general consensus, we will draft a resolution to do that and we will have that ready for the June 21st meeting. If there's a, if there's a decision, so six months or nine months?
So how would that affect, because I know that the TOT, this, this is kind of a part of the emergency ordinance, a smaller piece of that, right? So by waiting to do, if we were to decide as a council to do the nine-month, and that doesn't go into effect till October, how would that affect us being able to do anything with the other piece of it before October? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, if you're referring to the local emergency declaration.
Yeah.
So if the council does the nine-month, the local emergency resolution or declaration would cease October 1. The council elects the sixth month, it would cease July 1.
You can't, we can't do them separate, though, because they're tied together, right?
They're tied together and on the order of six months, and that's why you see that October 1 versus July 1 option.
So in essence, we're not changing anything except when we terminate it potentially and giving the hoteliers the opportunity to pay in advance, because technically they won't have to until the nine-month option we give them, right? But it's, it's still in the same fiscal year, still same responsibilities, still same commitments.
Yes.
I support the nine-month option.
Ms. Lozano?
So I have a question, and I was really torn last time we spoke about this. I guess it was not even a week ago, right?
That's correct.
But here, here's my question, and I just, it just popped in my mind because I didn't really even realize we'd be offered nine-month opportunity. What will that do with our budget that we're presumably going to adopt by July 1?
Well, what that means is that, as you know, there are, there are revenues and there are expenditures. It's just that the revenues, the additional one-time revenue from the catch-up with the TOT will not appear in the revenues until the second half of the fiscal year, of the first year of the biennial. So...
And that's, and that's assuming if we go with a nine-month option, that the hoteliers will pay by March 31st?
Yes.
I appreciate that answer. Thanks.
Now, is this, is this like a, is this like a deadline, March 31st, or is there like a payment structure that gives them nine months, or is just like, that's the deadline? So they could pay some of it and then pay a little more, or we could just not see a nickel and they could just show up in May and March with all of it?
You know, I think we would be, and I'm sorry if I overstated here, I think we would be open to whatever flexible payments they want to make. It's just that according to the municipal code, it's got to be collected and paid by March 31st, 2023.
And it's not like they can get out of it, and this is taxes, you know, death and taxes.
Yes.
It's going to get paid, so.
Yes.
And we certainly also have enough money to float them the difference in the time being.
And that's essentially what we'll be doing. Yeah.
I think ultimately the idea would be that we would put them on alert, that we are going to be ending the emergency on October 1st and that they have nine months and that we would anticipate they, A, would start paying all of their TOT on a quarterly basis and then also make those payments either quarterly, that's typically how they make them, or monthly. And we're welcome, you know, to, happy to work with them to kind of determine what that looks like. But we definitely would let them know that that deadline would be coming on March 31st. And so they would need to figure out a way to start those payments or have a lump sum to us on March 31st, whatever is best for them.
So Ms. Mendez, to clarify that, and maybe I misunderstood, so they actually, it's not just about the nine months to pay back, but they actually currently, could be, could possibly, one of them could currently not be paying right now, so they would, they would start paying again their regular payments in October and then be liable to pay the back by March, right? Okay. So, so we're basically giving them also another, what, three months before they have to start paying regularly on their current, right?
No.
Or no?
Basically, the urgency ordinance would still be in place, so they still could defer it.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
The deferral stays in effect effectively until whenever that new drop dead deadline is, whether it's December 1 or March 30, December 31 or March 31. It's up to them if they want to start making payments to get out of the hole, that's totally acceptable, or they can, you know, whatever.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And I think in the conversations that I had, they were definitely willing to begin that process. I don't think there was any intent to continue that deferral.
Any other council comments?
This would be, just to make sure I understand it right, we're talking about a resolution to end the TOT deferral and require it to be paid back. The greater emergency, the other parts of that that allow our businesses to serve outside without paying a fee or that, those would still be in effect in this situation, right?
Those would be in effect until July 1 or, I'm doing my math, October 1, depending if council chose the December 31st TOT deadline or the March 31st, 2023 deadline, because there's essentially a six-month window that is tied between the cessation of the local emergency declaration and the full payment repayment of the TOT. So, so to answer your question, no, it wouldn't be throughout, they wouldn't enjoy the same period of time that the hoteliers do. It'd be, like I said, either July 1, when that, the emergency ends, or October 1.
Well, that would give us until October 1 if we need to consider any ordinance changes. Maybe we want to keep some of the things that we've learned from COVID. So I, that seems to make sense to make it effective October 1.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Well, I, I would be in favor of the nine-month. I appreciate you reaching out to the businesses and the city being flexible with these two hotels being, I mean, we don't have a lot of them in town. They obviously were hit with a heavy burden from the pandemic, so I appreciate the council's willing to do this, and I think I would be willing to support that if that's the, so are we looking for an official vote or just a consensus here on this?
Just a consensus, and I think I have that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, with that, we will move on to, I'm going to ask, someone to ask Vice Mayor Sandu to come back in?
Yes. While the vice mayor, can someone step out and ask the vice mayor? And while the vice mayor's making his way back, I'm going to ask staff.
Yes.
If they could come in and see if there's any comments by staff. Mr. Mayor, I can...
Yes, please proceed with comments.
Okay, let's see if Stephanie Van Stein, our Human Resources Director.
Yes, good evening. I just thought I would announce that we have a couple of key recruitments that are ending on Friday. Our Deputy Public Works Director position, we also have a Senior Engineer and Associate Civil Engineer opening, all of those are closing on Friday. So if you know of anyone who's a licensed professional engineer, please let them know to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis. Mr. Christmas.
Just want to talk a little bit about our Saturday market. I wanted to thank our staff for their great job. They worked really hard. I understand there were some good barbecue out there. And so we have our next one planned on July 2nd, which will coincide with our IDC events. We will be having everything on that same day, our run, our parade, our Saturday market. So it's going to be a long day. And then, starting Friday, we have our movie in our parks. That series starts. Saturday, our concerts in our parks start. So we have a lot going on at Parks and Recreation, so. We'll also have the military, military vehicles in the parade, and we'll be reaching out to you guys to see if you guys would like to be on that for the parade this year. So be prepared to get a call from Jackie.
Director Solis, I understand you had some top-tier talent judging the barbecue contest on Saturday. Any, anyone that we know?
Yeah, I was there.
Love it.
Mayor Farmer and Councilman Vandenberg also helped.
Very good.
Yeah, we got, we got a little barbecue education by Mr. Solis. He's like, you see how that one's cut right there? So that tells you, and I'm like, oh, I did. So he was educating us about his barbecue knowledge.
All right, sir, thank you so much. Finance Director Matt Boring.
Who's about to birth his first budget as finance director.
It's almost there. I just want to announce that we were able to fill our Budget Analyst position, so we're excited to welcome Lana Nielsen to the city, and she brings over 25 years of experience, so we're really excited.
Very good, thank you. Chief Kalinowski.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. So last Friday, we had the Beyond Call of Duty End of Watch Ride to Remember that was here outside of City Hall. Many of you were there, some members of the public, and so we took an opportunity to remember Harmon and his ultimate sacrifice. So it's yet one more event that we've had recognizing Harmon, and we are still preparing our plans for his first year anniversary, which will be on August 26th, and there will be more to come on that as the summer unfolds. be on August 26th, and there will be more to come on that as the summer unfolds. And then lastly, internally, it was alluded to during some prior discussions, we were able to promote some folks internally. So, effective this last Monday, the 6th, Rod Fisher was promoted to sergeant, and then next Monday, the 13th, Kyle Slater will be a sergeant, being promoted and starting his role as a supervisor. So, we have some other anticipated moves and things going on, and that will occur once we have some stability with our staffing, as we've alluded to, to other planning efforts, to making sure that we have people in place, and so when we're afforded the opportunity to do that, we'll do something like that probably in the fall, for at least have one more supervisor. And then, that's all I have, except for, I think, Councilmember Lozano.
I just have a quick question, chief. Sorry to spring this on you, but it just kind of dawned on me. I was out and about today and happened to run into probably a handful of CAPS volunteers, and the one thing that I have noticed or haven't noticed is their involvement in the community events. Are we prepared to get them back out in, because they were just such a great contact and with the community at these events?
Yes, and we do when we have relevant events, and so we had them out there for the Historical Society event about three months ago, I guess it was now, and then they'll be there for the Fourth of July event and other, and obviously National Night Out. So, as we kind of come out and get more normal.
Yeah, I kind of figured that was the case, but, you know, I was thinking the Saturday markets would be a great opportunity for them to wander around and be an extra set of eyes, but also, also make that connection, so.
Yeah, I can, yeah, let me talk to staff about that and see. We usually do that based, you know, we get prompted from, you know, the event holder.
Right.
Maybe we missed that, so we'll look at that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Community Development Director Craig Hoffman, who we haven't heard from tonight.
Most people consider that a blessing. So, council members, on Monday, your building officials started. Zach Carver, he previously worked for the city back in, I think, 2018 and 19, and so it's great to actually have a building official. We haven't had one since beginning of 2019, added service, mentoring, and it's great to have that professional expertise. So, we're excited to have him on board. And then, Planning Commission this upcoming Thursday, something this council doesn't want to see, but you're going to see it, a lot of implementation measures for this housing element, and it's something you're going to be seeing in the upcoming months, ordinances and resolutions to implement that thing.
You're right, Craig. We didn't want to hear from you tonight.
All right, I'm done. Thank you all.
All right. Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council. I guess I'll keep with the theme. We had a couple of folks sail off into the sunset on us last week, Mr. Mark Clarkson, our city engineer, and Mr. Gary Whitehead, and Mr. Clarkson had about 11 years with the city, and Mr. Whitehead, over 30 years. So, unfortunately, a lot of institutional knowledge walked out on us, but I think the good news is, is that they're both more than willing to pick up the phone if we should ever need to pick their brains. And then, I want to welcome Marshall Bobson, our new senior equipment mechanic, who's just started, and we've been without a mechanic period for several months now. So, we're excited to have him on board, and I'm hopeful that we'll be filling the other mechanic position again shortly. So, and that'll help our streets guys, who've been doing an admirable job of keeping our fleet maintained in that interim, to free them up for more of their typical duties. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Selling. Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
I just wanted to briefly mention again, the business grant. We had launched that on June 1st, and it's available online. So, if you are running around and see any business owners or business managers out there, make sure to let them know. It's on City of Galt, it's on the front page right now. It's cityofgalt.org/businessgrant. So, it's a pretty simple application, that initial one. So, we do have mailers that we're sending out right now, flyers that are going out to all of those businesses that we have business license information for. So, those will land hopefully this week in the mail. So, but yeah, if you could just spread that word, that'd be great. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. City Clerk Tina Hubert.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item J, comments by city council members and future agenda items. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the staff. Thank you for the public comment. Also, thank you for the public involved in the city council meeting. Congratulations to the new youth commissioner. Congratulations to new city employees, and also congratulations to the promotion. I did a few things. I attended, I joined Saturday Market. It was a good turnout. Mayor Farmer and Councilmember Jay Bernberg were challenged to win barrel race. It was interesting. And there was a barbecue competition. I also got a chance to see the End of Watch Ride to Remember trailer that made a stop in Galt to honor Galt Police Officer Armin Garrawal. On May 30th, 2022, Memorial Day, at the cemetery at Jewish Drive, remembering those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, leaving loved ones behind in service to our great nation. On May 21st, I attended Community Cleanup Day with the Beautification Committee members and Youth Commissioner, and that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Papinow?
Thanks once again to the staff for the thorough and concise reports. And hats off to the Galt Arnold Cemetery District. They did a fine job, once again, with Memorial Day. And I didn't, wasn't at the market late enough for the barbecue. I was out there early, and quite appreciated being able to get my wristband put on and walk from one end to the other with my Bloody Mary. So, that was, that was nice. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to the youth committee. One of the youth commissioners is a neighbor of mine, a very fine young man that helps an elderly couple next to, live next to him, putting up lights and Christmas lights and that sort of thing, so it's very good to see him take that position, and I'm sure he'll do great things with it. I really appreciate public comment. It's the one time when the public can address the city council, staff, city manager, and legal all at the same time, so good on you for taking advantage of it. Thank you to the staff for the good reports. It's a lot of material to read, but it's very informative, and I would just like to say to the things that were said earlier or decided on earlier, it's not always, you know, the city manager had a program in a previous city for bringing regular citizens up here and giving them just such scenarios and making them decide, and suddenly they realize it's not as fun as it sounds on Facebook. And so, I don't necessarily take pleasure in, you know, every decision I make or decision I support, I should say, but I do do my best to do what's best for the city overall, top to bottom. So, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
You, Councilmember, Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I was down for a good week, and so my family had to divide and conquer some things, and, but I was able to get out to a few events, many that were already mentioned. But I also wanted to say that on Saturday, I was able to attend the Celebration of Life for Maisie Myrick, who was a longtime resident here in Galt, Rotarian, and longtime member of the United Methodist Church. She was 94 years young, and one of the things that was mentioned by one of the speakers was that most people outlive their friends if they're 94 years old, and this certainly wasn't the case. There were a couple hundred people in that small church, and I'll tell you, some were family, but she had friends of all ages. And so, it was, it was nice to honor her, see some old friends that I hadn't seen for a while, but yeah, it was, it was a good, it was a good showing and certainly a good celebration. The honor ride that came through last Friday was amazing. These, honoring our fallen officers throughout the country is important and certainly something that we want to continue to do and not forget. So, I thank the chief for his work on really putting something special together for the one-year anniversary of Armin's passing. And there's some other things, but I'm going to stop there, and thank you for the community that came out and spoke, and certainly thank you to staff for all the reports that were very thorough.
All right, thank you, sir. I too want to thank the public who spoke tonight. Public comment's always important, and I'm glad to see people involved. I want to thank the youth commission and the beautification commission for another good cleanup day, as the vice mayor mentioned, and the group from End of Watch Ride that brought their trailer and their group here. It was nice to see in their travels all across the country that we were able to include Galt in their, in their stop, and it was very, very sobering to see all those faces on the trailers. Also, Memorial Day ceremony, as Mr. Papinow mentioned, was very good. Again, very well, hats off to the cemetery district for doing a great job decorating. It was a great event. So many flags just blanketing the entire cemetery. It's just crazy to think about how many people have served in this little town, have served their country. And then, lastly, the, actually met the new CSO officer today with Lieutenant, now Lieutenant Azavito, who came by and was able to have a chat with him and look forward to good things with him. And lastly, but not least, I want to thank, you know, again, Parks and Rec staff for all the hard work with the markets, with the Saturday market, Jackie, Ashley, Carrie, all the volunteers that I don't know their names, for all the cleanup they did after, and did a great job. It was a lot of work. Being a barbecue judge was, you know, it's a tough job, and somebody has to do it. So, we had a good time with that, and I want to thank Councilman Vandenberg for allowing me to win our barrel race.
I almost beat you on the turn.
Yeah. So, anyways, it was a good event, and I look forward to the one on July 2nd, which should be very, very busy. So, with that, we'll wrap up, and we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:24 PM. Good night.